All right, I think we're going to get started here. So hopefully you can all hear me okay?
Yeah.
All right. So I'm Kevin Burnett with Willdan Financial Services. I'm here with my colleague Pat Walker. So we were the ones that were running this study for the city. So we wanted to give you an overview of what's been taken forward to council. We showed them a couple of different options. So now we're going to show you the options that we showed to council and hopefully get some feedback from you all and be able to carry your concerns or recommendations or thoughts or whatever the case may be to council. So we'll get into a little bit more of the schedule a little bit later on. So what we want to walk through with you today is to give you an overview of the purpose of the rate study, the proposed rates that we've come up with. There's a couple of different scenarios both for water and for sewer that we want to talk to you all about. And then we've got some comparisons for how the current rates compare to your neighbors as well as the rate recommendations that we put together for you. So the first thing here is the purpose of the rate study. So what we were tasked to do initially was to look at the water and sewer financial plans for the utilities and see are you, is the city generating enough revenue to cover their costs on an annual basis? Are you falling short? What needs to be done to maintain the system and provide service to the customers? There's some different pieces of that that we needed to look at, making sure that you were covering your operating costs every year, making sure that the city had enough money to maintain the system, do repair and replacement, be proactive in keeping the systems up to date. There's some target reserves that I'll get into in a moment that the city strives to achieve every year. The city has outstanding debt both on the water and the sewer side. So as issuing that debt, there are certain legal requirements that the bondholders require the city adhere to. So we'll talk about that in a minute as well. And then the second piece of the state of the rate study was looking at the rates themselves. So what's working well with the existing rate structure? What areas are available for improvement? What are the goals and objectives that the city wanted to do? So the two main goals that the city came up with that they wanted to achieve through the rate structure was revenue stability, making sure that they had the money coming in the door every month to be able to pay their bills, maintain the system. And at the same time, they wanted to have a rate structure that encouraged conservation with water being a limited resource, of course. So with that, we'll talk a little bit about water. So why are we proposing a rating revenue increase for water? So the last rate study that was conducted on the water side was done in 2008. So that's going back 12, 13 years or so since the last rate study was done. The last rate study was done in 2008. The last time water rates were raised was 2009. So as you can imagine, costs have increased since 2009. The city's operating costs have gone up, but rates have not gone up by that same period. As we looked at the financial plan going forward, on an annual basis, expenses were exceeding revenues by about $7 million a year. So more revenue was needed by the city in order to maintain the water utility and provide service. Basically, the status quo is unsustainable as we stand now. The other thing that we have going on, as I'm sure you're aware, the ADD property tax is going away. So that was bringing in about $5.7 million a year. So that's going to be going away. So the delta, so even though the ADD tax is going away by 5.7 million, our shortfall was 7 million. So there's still a shortfall even above and beyond that 5.7 million in property tax going away next year. As I said, operating costs have gone up over time. There's additional costs to repair and maintain the system. And then the target reserve that I mentioned. So the target reserve that the city has set aside is 15% of the previous five years' average revenues. And basically what they're trying to do with that target reserve is when the customers pay their bills, that money comes into the city and at the same time, the city also has bills that they have to pay. In a perfect world, there would be an exact matching or revenues from customers would come in on day one and the city wouldn't have to pay their bills until day three. That's not always the sinking process that goes on. Sometimes the city has to pay their bills before the revenue gets collected from the customers. So having this 15% reserve ensures that there's enough money available that the city can pay their bills on an annual basis, on a monthly basis. It also provides a little bit of protection if there were to be a water main break or some unanticipated capital need. The city has those monies that it can draw from to take care of the system.
Can you explain the ADD and some detail? What is that?
I think I'm going to have to rely on staff a little bit for that one. It's a property tax within... The irrigation and drainage district was the original taxing district when Lake Havasu City was originally formed as part of the county. And it funded the water and wastewater system. So really, that's all it is. It's a per acre cost on your property tax.
Why is it going away? Did it have a certain criteria that was created?
Yes, it should have went away several years ago, actually. It was on a schedule, but we extended the deadline, if you will, to fund some projects until we figured out what we were going to do to replace that. And that's what we're doing today.
I have a second question. Does it have to go away? Or does it... It has a long time. Why does it go away?
I don't want to interrupt here, but they can't hear it on camera if I don't give you a microphone. It's going away. It was supposed to go away in 1978, and it's just been kicked down the road thus far.
I know. But my question is, if it's been kicked down the road for now, 78 to now, you know, why can't you kick it down the road further? Why is it, why does it have to go away to the tune of $5 million?
Once the debt is paid off, which we're now at that point where the debt is being paid off, then we can no longer have it. That's why.
Yes, you're correct. We were carrying debt to continue this irrigation, drainage and irrigation district. And after a while, that doesn't become feasible to carry small amount of debt.
Is that the sewer debt or is it a water debt?
Was that the sewer debt or the water debt?
Yeah, it was for water. Sewer is completely separate. This recent sewer debt, yes.
My question is, what is the difference between the inside the ADD and outside the ADD?
Do they pay any of the outside the ADD or higher rates?
Those, some of the properties within, and I'm not doing the presentation.
The original irrigation and drainage district area is smaller than the city limits and smaller than our water service area. So inside the ADD pays that per acre additional cost on your property tax. Outside pays a higher rate for the water that they use to level that.
What's out there? Oh, does anybody know?
You happen to have a map or... The question was, just to repeat so we have it on the camera, the question was, what was the original ADD district boundaries?
The city staff refers to it as the incorporated city limits, which is where the houses are, basically. What you would find to be outside the original irrigation and drainage district are those properties that were annexed in our new developments such as Havasu Foothills, the Riviera. I'm not sure if Sailing Hawks was part of that or not, but that's where the difference is.
And some of your questions may end up getting answered through his presentation.
Quite possibly.
So just to clarify, if the ADD debt is getting paid off, then you no longer have the $5.7 million shortfall because since that debt's paid off, you don't have to pay that money. So why is that considered a shortfall at that point?
The irrigation and drainage district is a taxing district, right? We're all paying into that. That generates approximately $5.7 million a year. The debt we carry to keep the district going would be to, originally was to build the original infrastructure, but we extended that by purchasing vehicles and things like that. So we had to carry debt. Once the debt was paid off, the district dissolves, which means we don't have a means to collect the property tax, which generates $5.7 million. Does that make sense?
So if you're collecting X amount, like I was looking at my tax bill, I've got the amount on my tax bill. If you're collecting that to pay off the debt and the debt's done, that goes away, fine, but the $5.7 million is included up there as a shortfall because you're using $5.7 million to, that's a revenue piece for the year to pay the debt. Debt's gone, you don't need that revenue.
We do need the revenue to maintain our sewer system, our water system, pay staff and things like that, do projects.
I think where the confusion lies is we collect $5.7 million a year in the taxes not to pay off just the debt, but that's what we use to maintain the system. The debt is less than $30,000.
Yeah.
That's why it's being, it's going away because that money is not enough to actually have debt. It's less than $30,000. We collect $5.6 million and then use that money every year when you see us fixing the water lines and that kind of stuff. That's what that money's used for.
So do I have this clear? The 5.7 is in the 7 million? So basically, we're going to raise our taxes by 1.3 million, right? Or that's what you need? You need 1.3 million over what we've been...
So water rates are going to need to go up to overcome that 5.7 million that's going away. And then there's an additional 1.3 million in water rate revenue that's going to be needed over and above.
So we won't be paying the ADD on our property taxes anymore? It'll be into another tax, right?
It'll be in the water rates, not a tax.
It'll be in the rate, not the tax.
In the rates, yeah.
Okay.
So how much you use will vary on what your bill is, which we'll get into.
New developments going in. I'm assuming that that's part of the developmental costs that are bore by the developer and the actual infrastructure and stuff is funded through that process rather than the taxpayers installing or being in charge of that type of development.
Right. So the capital improvement program that we've got incorporated in the water rates is designed to do the maintenance of the system, to repair the system, to take care of any lining, replacing water lines, as Greg had mentioned. So it's to take care of that routine maintenance that needs to be done. That's what's in the water rates.
The initial, if I could...
Oh.
Yeah. That's all that we're going to do. Why do you offer... Be able to stop the games of the non-essential development? That's...
That is correct. Any new development, development pays for itself is what we say. They pay for all the new water and sewer lines, the pavement, sidewalks. They pay for that upfront. And then the utilities at the end are turned over to the city for maintenance. So that's why you pay for the city for the water they use. All right. So then the last piece on the slide here was that debt service coverage that I was talking about. So that's when the city has gone out and issued debt. As part of issuing the debt, a pledge was made to the bondholders that there's going to be for every dollar of debt outstanding, that every dollar of debt payment that needs to be made on an annual basis, the city needs to have a $1.20 available to pay that debt service. They're not paying a $1.20 for every debt that's out there. They just need to show that they have that money available to pay it. It provides a level of comfort for the bondholders that the city is going to make good on its promise and that that money is available to pay it. So the 1.2 times, that's what the legal debt service coverage is. The city is targeting a 1.5 times coverage. It's best management practices. It just provides that much more assurance to the bondholders that the city is being responsible. If in the event that the city wants to go out and issue debt in the future, they can point back to it and say, our legal requirement was 1.2. We managed to have 1.5. Therefore, we're better suited to have a lower interest rate on any future debt that we issue. So it's an attempt by the city to be responsible.
So where, when you pay off the $30,000 debt?
So the question was the $30,000 that was referenced before, whether that was water or sewer, and that's on the water side.
How do we ever pay off the bond owners or do we never pay off the bond people, holders?
Do we ever pay off the bondholders for the water system?
On the water system, yes. We've got what, there's a set schedule for what the annual debt service payments are, and we've got that factored into the financial plan. So the debt will get, ultimately get paid off.
When is that?
So that's with, where I had mentioned with the sun setting of the ADD property tax. So we've got that to coincide so that the property tax goes away when the debt gets paid off. So that'd be next year.
So we don't owe the bondholders anymore?
For that particular issuance, no. There's going to be other issuances that carry forward.
Okay.
In water and in sewer, yeah. All right. So this has been some good discussion. So now we're going to get into a little bit more specifics of the two options. We've got an option A and an option B that we're going to share with you all this afternoon. So option A is what we're calling a balanced approach. So I talked about the two objectives that we were trying to meet, the revenue stability piece and the conservation piece. So in looking at the revenue stability piece first, so your current rate structure, the way it's designed, is you've got a monthly base charge that you pay every month. So even if you don't use a drop of water, the city has certain costs that they need to cover every month regardless of whether or not anybody's using water. The debt service is one of those items. Staff costs, you need to maintain a certain number of staff to maintain the system regardless of how much water is being used. The customer service, some of those kinds of costs. So in terms of revenue stability, we're recommending an increase in that monthly base charge so that the city has more quote unquote guaranteed revenue coming in every month. That's something that they can count on. The other side of your rate structure is the tiered water rate. So the more water you use every month, the higher the rate you pay, the higher your monthly bill is based on your water usage. That's where the conservation piece comes into play. So if we're going to increase the rates as you move through those tiers, water becomes more expensive. So the intent is that's going to encourage conservation, that people will use less water so that they're not paying as high a monthly water bill. So those were the two objectives that we were trying to achieve through that. The third bullet I've got up here is greater equity inside and outside the ADD. So this, we touched on a little bit in the last slide where, right now, because there is that ADD tax, there's a higher rate that is charged to customers who are outside the irrigation and drainage district in order to compensate for the fact that they're not paying that property tax that those inside are. Once the ADD property tax goes away, everybody's going to be paying the same rate regardless of whether you're inside the district or outside the district. The rates are going to be the same.
So if you don't, you're not using it as much. So, I mean, we're still getting messed around with in that aspect where the more you conserve, the more expensive it gets. I mean, we've seen this in numerous situations. I mean, how can the states and counties justify that? Is you told us to conserve, we do our job, and then you jack the rates because you're no longer, the structure that's built in isn't taking care of that, I guess.
You're right. So it's in the short term, yes, that's exactly what's happening, that the city has certain costs right now as you conserve water. You're selling less water, therefore the rates need to go up in order to cover those current level of costs. The goal with the conservation incentive is that over time, looking more in a longer-term horizon, Greg doesn't need to go out and purchase as many water rights. He doesn't need to get the additional water supplies so that over time, the existing portfolio of water available to customers is going to be able to sustain for a longer period of time. So the goal of conservation is more of a long-term objective or a longer-term look. But you're absolutely right that in the short term, because you are conserving, that causes greater pressure on the rates to go up to meet those costs in the current environment.
Are we going to increase the participants in this? Some of the folks that have septic systems and me, I wouldn't think you would want to pay the full boat, but have, anybody that owns land here should be responsible for the clean water and everything? Shouldn't we increase the amount of people that we have on this?
Yeah. Well, as new customers do connect to the system, then yes, they are going to be...
I'm talking about existence.
This is, we're talking fresh water, not sewer right now.
So what I've got up here now, so this is our option A. So this is the comparison of the monthly fixed charges that I was just mentioning. So you've got the inside current for a 3/4 inch meter, which is most common for a single-family residential home. It's currently at 5.16 a month. Outside the district, it's at 6.45 a month. And then the proposed would be $9.02 a month. So that's the increase on the monthly base charge. So that achieves that revenue stability goal that we were talking about.
You said that all the whole rate, you're paying 8,000.
So everybody going forward would be paying the $9.02 a month, yeah. That's just where you're at today, yeah.
Okay, we're trying to film this and if you don't have a microphone, they can't hear it. So the people watching on TV.
Is the fixed charge to be added to any, any of the charges listed after this page?
Yes. So as I mentioned, so you've got two pieces to your water rate structure, the monthly base charge that you pay every month, and then you've got the volume component. So these, yeah, still on that slide. So these would apply every month regardless of how much water you use. You would pay, if you had a 3/4 inch meter, you would pay $9.02 a month. And then you would pay for whatever your water use is on the next slide, which we'll get to.
I think we have another question.
Thank you. For people like me on our property that paid to have an irrigation meter put in, it sounds to me like you're just going to get charged for two meters. And so basically what you've done in the past to do the right thing is pretty much going to get, if you'll say, flushed. How is that going to work? Are we still going to pay for two meters and we're going to have, basically, the charges for the water for each meter is going to be the same? Since obviously the irrigation water doesn't go through sewage, and I know that's a different issue.
Right. So the way we've got it set up is, yes, you would have the base charge for each of the meters that you have. There's a rate structure for the residential, single-family residential or the domestic water tap. And then there's a charge for the irrigation meter. So those are two separate rate structures. So then when you do get your sewer bill, your sewer bill would be based on the domestic meter, not on the irrigation meter. Does that answer the question? All right. So this is what we've got as the proposed single-family volume rate. So this is, again, this would be in addition to what you're paying for your base charge. The base charge you pay every month, and then the volume rates here, this is a charge based on how much water you use. So the current rate structure there on the left, you've got 0 to 1,300 cubic feet a month. If you're inside, it's $1.35 per 100 cubic feet. If you're outside, it's $1.69 per 100 cubic feet. The next tier is 1,301 to 2,500, 2,501 to 5,000, and then over 5,000. So you can see as you move through those tiers, the cost of water goes up. On the proposed side, again, once we're doing away with the ADD property tax, whether you're indoor, inside the ADD or outside the ADD, it's that one rate structure. So we're proposing 0 to 1,000 cubic feet a month at a dollar, 1,001 to 2,400 cubic feet a month at a dollar 88 per 100 cubic feet, 2,401 to 6,500, and then over 6,500. So here we've got the multifamily and commercial. So again, we're just updating the rate structures themselves. Inside versus outside's going to go away. It's going to be one rate structure regardless of where we're at, whether you're inside or outside currently. Option B, this is what we've titled, the low-volume user approach. So again, we have the same types of things that we're trying to achieve here, the revenue stability, but we're also trying to lessen the burden on the lower-volume user compared to where you're at today. So right now, your base charge you pay, you pay that every month, and it doesn't include any water. If you don't use any water, you've still got that base charge. What we're proposing in this option here is you still pay that base charge every month, but it's going to include an allotment of water in it. So if you stay within a certain allotment of water, all you'd be paying is that base charge, and you would actually get some water use included with your base charge. So if we move over to this slide here, so there, again, you see the current, you've got two different base charges. Going forward, it'd just be one. So that base charge now includes 500 cubic feet of water for single-family customers. So if you use 0 to 500, 0 to 500 cubic feet a month, under this option, you would only pay the $9.02 versus the previous option, you would be paying your base charge plus the 0 to 500 volume rate. So this one, it's intended to give a bit of a break to those lower-volume users. So there you can see, we've got 0 to 500 is shown at $0. That's included in your base charge. And then we've got the incremental tiers going forward at that point. Still maintaining the structure that the more water you use, the more expensive it is. So we still have the tier set up for this rate structure. Then we've got the multifamily and commercial. So we're only proposing one option for multifamily, commercial, all non-single-family. We've only got one rate structure. So this is the same as we had shown for option A. So now we want to get into some sample bills for you. So we want to make the caveat that everybody in this room, assuming everybody has different water uses, everybody's going to have a different bill going forward. So not everybody's going to be impacted the same way. Some are going to see a higher increase than others, some are going to see a decrease, some will see a bigger decrease than somebody else's. It all depends on what customer class you're in, what your meter size is, and how much water you use every month. All right. So this is supposed to be a comparison. The numbers are a little bit hard to see there. But this is a comparison of different profiles, a low-volume user, more of an average or mid-user, and then a high-user. So the darker blue on the far left, that's going to be what your current bill is today. Moving forward into the green, that's going to be what your option A bill is. The lighter blue is option B. And then the purple at the end, that's what your bill would be with CPI. So I said, the last time the city raised water rates was 2009. So if you applied the annual CPI from 2009 through to today, applied that to the last time the city had a rate increase, that's what the bill would be under each of these scenarios. So you can see in each of these cases here, what we're recommending in terms of either option A or option B is going to be less than what the bill would be had the city applied CPI every year since the last rate increase. We've got some non-residential comparisons here, too. So the first grouping, again, there was only one proposed option for the commercial rates. So the first option would be a local bar in the city. The second option there is also a local bar in the city. And then the third would be a church within the city. So again, the blue bar is going to be what the rate is today, the monthly bill today. And these are based on actual customers with their actual use. The green is what the bill would be under our proposed options. And then the purple is what we, the current bill would be if it was inflated every year and brought up into today's dollars. We've got more non-residential comparisons here. So these are both hotels. So those are two hotels within the city and what their monthly bills would be. We're getting near to the end of water here. So one of the questions that we always get asked when we do these rate studies is how do we compare to our neighbors? It's something that everybody wants to know, and we always have to caveat it that it's incredibly difficult to find an exact apples-to-apples comparison when we're looking at our neighbors. Why is it so hard? The geographic location, the size of the treatment facilities, the customer base. If you've got more residential customers versus commercial customers, that's going to change the way the rate structure is set up. The age of the system, how much geographical territory the system has to cover, if there's specific site requirements that need to be taken care of. We've got some clients that we work with that have arsenic in the water, so there's an extra level of treatment that needs to be done. So trying to compare a community that has arsenic treatment with one that doesn't, that's going to skew the results. The type of the water supply, whether it's well water, surface water... The type of the water supply, whether it's well water, surface water, purchased water, all of that factors into things. But at the same time, everybody still wants to know how we compare to our neighbors. So with that, we've got this comparison that we put together for you all. So you can see, the second line from the top, Lake Havasu City Current, so that's what an average single-family residential customer pays today is $17.31 a month. If we were to go with option A, their bill would increase to $18.47 a month. Under option B, it would be $16.77. And then that current with CPI. So again, if we had applied CPI every year since the last time rates were increased, that monthly bill would be $21.17. So right now, you're in the bottom third of the comparison group. Based on our recommendations, you would still be in the bottom third of your neighbors. So while the comparisons are good for kind of a ballpark estimate of where you are, the important thing to remember is that we're in Lake Havasu City here. So we're using the costs to run the system in Lake Havasu City. We're not using the cost to run the Buckeye system, or we're not using the cost to run the Kingman system. The costs that we have are specific to Lake Havasu City. The rates that we've developed are specific to Lake Havasu City, based on your customer base, how you customer, how the customers are using water, the number of meters, all of that kind of thing goes into the rates that we've developed here. So with that, that comes to the end of the water presentation. So if we can address any questions on water, then we'll turn it over to Pat for sewer. He's coming with the mic.
On the comparison to neighbors, what is that 945 CF?
That's 945 cubic feet. So that's what the average customer is using.
How many cubic feet, how many gallons per cubic feet?
So 100 cubic feet is equivalent to 748 gallons.
Okay, I think I had one more. What is the average usage, cubic feet? This would be on page eight, for a single-family home.
The average usage for a single-family home? So that's the 945 cubic feet that we've got.
That's the Lake Havasu City average?
That's the Lake Havasu City average, yeah.
The revenue, thank you, good presentation, by the way. Good information. The revenue generated that we're talking about, is it used to, for anything else besides water infrastructure? Is it strictly used just for water?
No. So the city's water and sewer utilities are set up as enterprise funds. So as enterprise funds, they're reliant on the charges that they get from the customers for the services they provide, and it can only be used for that purpose. So water charges can only be used for water-related costs. Sewer costs, sewer revenues can only be used for sewer-related costs.
Again, good presentation. You guys, look at the what we pay as compared to everybody else. Give them a break, they're doing a great job.
On the water volume rates, or the domestic, if you will, water usage that's gonna be processed through the sewer system, and the irrigation volume rates, the same, because I don't see any differentiation of those rates?
We do have, we do have separate irrigation rates. So the meter, the base meter charge would be the same regardless of whether it's an irrigation meter or a domestic meter. And then we've got, the irrigation rates would be 0 to 2,900 cubic feet a month at $1.67, 2,901 to 9,500 cubic feet a month at $2.51, and then over 9,500 cubic feet a month at $5.02 per 100 cubic feet.
So I have some questions here. So just looking at some observations. So the single-family water rates, looking at the chart, looks like option B is probably the better one to go with, but it seems like the folks that use larger volumes are getting a better break. Their rates tend to go down, whereas the lower-volume users are kind of maybe up or down, depending on what you choose. But also, I noticed here, the folks on the outside IDD rates are getting a pretty good decrease, whereas the ones within the district are really, probably gonna net maybe a slight increase. Is that really what we're looking at here, or am I misinterpreting?
No, no, your interpretation is correct. So on the first piece of it, you're right, there's the balancing act between how much revenue we get from the base charge versus how much we get from the volume component. So the higher that we raise the base charge, the fixed charge component, the less revenue we get from the volume component. So that's why you're seeing that decrease in the larger-volume users, is because we're getting more of the revenue from the base charge. In terms of the IDD property tax, yes. The inside versus outside, yes. Inside is going up a little bit while they're not getting the, paying the property tax. And the outside district is getting a break, because that property tax is going away. So to level the playing field between inside and outside, we have the same rate for everyone. So yeah, they are getting a decrease in what their current bill is. All right. Well, I thank you, and I will turn it over to Pat for sewer, but I'm not going away. So if you have something else that comes up, I'm still here.
Good afternoon. I'm gonna be discussing the sewer, proposed sewer rates, and I'm gonna be taking off my mask, so you can hear me better.
Hang on one minute, it looks like we did have one more question.
We've got a question right off the bat.
I know it's early for a question, but it's more historical. We've only lived here since 2014, and happened to be on the sewer system. We have neighbors who are on septic system. What we've heard is that the reason we had to, we have to pay the sewer system, or the system, we have to pay the sewer, is that the federal government required us back a number of years ago to upgrade or provide a better sewer system to begin with, or they would not, further federal funds to the city would be relied on us improving our sewer system. Is that correct or incorrect?
I find it to be incorrect. The way that the sewer system happened was, the state was involved. And the state does routine water quality testing for Lake Havasu, on Lake Havasu. And what happened is, they found some contaminated waters, which they determined to be caused by all the septic systems uphill from the lake itself. So we did a huge study, and what the state said is, they would have to consider putting a moratorium on issuing more septic tank permits if we didn't install a sewer system. And if we didn't get permits to install additional septic systems, that means we couldn't build any more houses. So what the city did was build a sewer system and take all the septic systems, or 22-plus-thousand of them, off of septic and put on to the centralized sewer system. Yeah, the question was, are the people that are still on septic system paying or carrying the people that are paying for the, or the people paying for the sewer are carrying the people on the septic? And people on septic systems do not pay a, they don't have a sewer bill.
You're gonna be hearing the same thing over a little bit, because it's the same reasons why you're having to increase the sewer rates versus the water rates, just different amounts. And with the sewer, there is $3 million a year over the next several years that they're short. On expenditures, revenues are not meeting the expenses to the tune of $3 million. So additional revenues needed for the same reasons that the water was, for increasing operational costs, maintaining, repairing the system, the 15% of the rolling five-year average revenues, and to meet the debt service ratio coverage that Kevin explained, which was the 1.2 legal requirement, and then the 1.5 for the best financial practices for future bond sales and better interest rates overall. Again, the same thing is looked at, as far as, option A is the first option. We have two options. Option A is to have revenue stability, and so your flat residential rate is one of the things that was considered in option A. No, not based on flows or anything, just if you would just charge a flat rate to everybody for the sewer. And then it also consolidated non-residential customers to fewer classes. You had so many classes, and we consolidated those down. So this is the option A, the residential monthly charge. Currently, it's at $41. What we're proposing is $54.25, but then there is no flow rate. The current minimum monthly included a 562 cubic feet within the current flat rate. But our proposal is just to charge a 54.25. If you're multifamily, your monthly charge is gonna go from 2,350 to 4,867, and you will be charged a flat rate. It's going from 7.30, but it's going down to 6.26, but the monthly charge is going up. On option A, non-residential, you're gonna see the same thing. The monthly charge is 52.50. With option A, it's gonna be 48.67, but the flow rate is going up to 10.44. The one thing that I will mention on this is that this is not just based on taking a dart and throwing it, it's based on cost of service, what it cost us, based on flows of these different classifications within the non-residential. We looked at what those costs are, and we applied those accordingly. You're gonna see things different from the current there, because again, you're looking way back, and what factors might have influenced the cost of service or the expenditures within these classes have changed over time. And so we looked at the current expenditures that you have to serve, RV parks versus commercial versus hotel rooms. And you see hotel rooms, the monthly charge is per room, going from $22 to 1,787. And then septic hauler, the monthly charge is just flat, and it's going from 6,140 up Option B is the other option that we looked at, where you have a minimum charge included within the fee. It includes 500 cubic feet of flow per month. You might say, well, why did you go from 562 to 500? Well, you bill in 100 increments. So it really didn't make sense to have the 62, we included the 500. The average winter consumption is eliminated. There's no averaging on that. The monthly sewer bill is actually based on actual water use. And the flows, however, will be capped at 750 cubic feet. That's the most that you will pay, because it's assumed that the additional usage that you have, like in the summer months, is not going down the sewer system. It might be watering, it might be filling a pool or something like that. So we capped it at 750. On the residential, the monthly charge is going from $41 to 52.14 with the flow rate, and this is option B, from 7.30 down to $1.76. The current monthly minimum, as I mentioned, was 562 cubic feet. We're including 500, but capping it at 750 cubic feet. Multifamily, again, the charge is going from 2,350 to 4,867, and the flow rate is going down from 7.30 to 6.26. For a look at the non-residential, under option B, you can see the rates on the monthly charges and flow rates. It's going down on the monthly charge for commercial, industrial, but the flow rate's going up to 10.44. On the RV park, the monthly charges are going up to 24.34, and the flow rate is $3.13 as opposed to $7.30. The hotel per room is going from 22 to 1,787, but the flow rate is going down, 9.37. Again, this is based on cost of service, looking at actual flows for hotels, and doing the calculation of the rates. And the septic hauler, again, the flow rate is what it would be based on totally, from our flat rate to 6,787. So we have some comparisons here for sewer rate comparisons, and we show what a low customer would be under the scenario of a curtain, current, sorry, of current. And then the second block is option A. The third block is option B. And the fourth is if you took your current rates, like we did the water, and you applied a CPI, what would it look like? And then we took a low of 500 cubic feet compared to a medium of 1,009 cubic feet to a high of 1,0423, to show what the differences would be in the bills across the board for For non-residential, this is the bar, and this is at 2,420 cubic feet. Another bar at 938, and then a church that had zero flow, to show you the comparisons. The next one is another hotel, and two hotels, one being at 18,525 cubic feet with the current proposed and with CPI, and then the 5,790 cubic feet usage. Just, again, to give you a flavor, the difference is depending on the usage under the comparisons. So like we did with water, it's the same thing. No difference on sewer. Every system is different, every, the geography's different, you know, the maintenance of the system, the age of the assets, all those things come into play. But again, we want to do a comparison to show you where you're stacking up against other communities. So making the assumption that you're going to have the average of 750 cubic feet on the sewer side, you could see that option A is at $54.25 as opposed to the current of 54.72. If you take option B, you're at 56.54. So those are the differences in the rates depending on option A or option B. So just so you all know what the next steps are, state statute requires that you adopt a notice of intent and set a public hearing date. That is scheduled for March 9th. Then after that, you, when you publish that public hearing date, they're gonna publish that it's gonna be held May 11th. And the public hearing will be held so that, again, people can come forward and express their thoughts about the rate increases. And then the new rates would become effective July 1st of 2021. So with that, I'll open it up for questions.
I'm gonna start here and work my way around. Of option A or B, which one seems to be favored? That's my first question. I have a second question as well.
When you say favored, by whom?
What's the preferred recommendation? I'll put it that way, maybe. Is there a preferred? Or is that up for discussion within the city council?
Well, it's up for discussion. That's why both options were presented to the public. The A, again, as you can see, is just a flat amount. It's got, what's the advantages? One is that it's one fee. You don't have the winter averaging anymore. There's not as much administrative cost associated with maintaining this type of system. And you know what your bill's gonna be every month. It's 54.25 for a residential. And then on the option B, you are paying a flow. You're based on water usage. So you do get the first 500 included in your rate, but anything above that, you'll be paying a flow rate. And that's the differences between the two. One is more revenue stability, because you have flat rate, where if you're basing your revenues on flow, those can fluctuate from month to month. That's the main thing.
And my second question, it seems like hotels are getting a break here. They're actually getting a rate reduction rather than any kind of rate increase. What's the methodology behind that?
Well, that's a good question, and we always look at that, too, whenever we see a category go down. And it gets back to the cost of service. We have to look at what cost they put on the system, what demand do they put on the system? And so we actually check the hotel's flow rates, and then we do the calculation of what it costs to supply the hotels versus a bar versus others. And so that's why it just fell out that way. What was included in a prior study, we don't know. Maybe things were different then, and that's why they were higher. But this is based on cost of service.
So was there a recommendation considered to maybe leave hotels the same and see if there's a savings passed on to residents?
Well, again, as rate consultants, we're gonna, we're gonna do our job to recommend cost of service, because you're really supporting one classification off the backs of another. And, you know, as rate consultants, we don't like to see that, because, you know, it's, everybody should pay their fair share. But, you know, that's something that can be discussed, of course, with council, but that would be more of a policy decision than a rate decision, because we want to provide to you what the true cost is for classification. Because it could go the opposite way. Would you want single-family to support commercial? Would you want commercial to support single-family? Would you want hotels? So what we do is a cost of all the classifications and recommend rates from there.
Is that a hypothetical question? Just, sir?
I would say, my opinion would be...
I would say, my opinion would be, and I don't know how other folks feel about that, but hotels, leave them flat and maybe there's a savings you can pass on to some other, you know, classifications as it were.
That's why we're having these meetings, so we can hear this input. Thank you.
I just want to be, I have a question plus I want to be clear. With option A, will we still have winter averaging?
No.
No? Okay.
For residential, yes.
For residential, okay.
Right. No flow rate.
So no, no averaging and no flow rate? Okay. So if we go to option B, again, no averaging, but we have a flow rate.
Yes, correct.
And, but the flow rate will be going from 7.30 down to $1.76.
Yes. Hundred cubic feet, yes.
But it gives you 562 to begin with, all year long.
Now, it gives you 500 within your rate, your base rate, and then?
Okay, 500, I see.
The current is 562 and then it's capped at 750 cubic feet.
Meaning that once it comes to 750, any month of the year, it's, there's no?
Right.
There's no extra charge.
Right, if you're residential.
Okay.
Now, you're saying that the average flow is 750?
Yes.
Okay. So if you get 500 in that option B, then you got to pay for the 250?
Yes.
Okay. What is the current sewer debt?
I'll have to look that up. We don't have that tip of our tongue.
Is the sewer guy gone?
It's 13.7 million each year.
The debt?
Yes, the annual debt payment. 13.7 million.
Does it say how long that goes?
Pardon?
Does it say how long that debt runs? When does it expire?
So there's multiple issuances. So the first issuance is through 2035. The second issuance is through 2037. And the third issuance is through 2045. So there were three, three separate debt issues. So there was a 2015 WIFA, a 2015, sorry, a series, 2015 Series A, a 2015 Series B, and then an additional 2015. So there were three separate bond issuances. So that's why each issuance has a different end date on them.
Does it say how much for each?
In terms of the annual payment? No.
The amount of each issue of the bond?
So we had, one was issued for $60,269,000. Last one looks like... It's not broken out. If you give me a minute, I'll look into that one.
Thank you. And I just wanted to clarify that the public hearing will be both for water and bond, I mean, water and sewer on May 11th?
That's correct.
Thank you.
You might have answered this question already, but the sewer and water 2009 rates, you said, has not been raised since, that's for sewer and water? Was that sewer and water?
So 2009 was the last time water rates were raised. Sewer was more sooner than that.
Okay.
Yeah. 98.3 was the third debt issuance that you were asking about.
Yeah, what are the interest rates on those bonds? And can they be, can they be reissued? Interest rates got to be lower now than they were in 2008.
WIFA doesn't usually, won't allow you to, because they build their portfolio on the interest rate. They normally won't do that. The most that WIFA will do is, is usually if you have reserve requirements, they might free up reserve requirements in the future if your finances are looking better. It depends on what it's secured, but normally they don't refinance the, the interest rates.
If I may, normally they don't do that. However, the reason those bonds were issued in 2015 is we did refi those. We had to actually get legislation passed. Our current state senator, Sonny Borelli, he passed legislation so WIFA had to allow us to refinance those rates at the, at the lower rate. That's the reason that the rates have not gone up since 2009 is because we were able to refinance that debt and keep the cost down. The interest rates?
5%.
5%?
Yes, I was wondering with the incredible growth the city's going through and with Havasu Riviera, Foothill Estates, and the stress it's going to be putting on our infrastructure, is that going to affect the payments that we are making? Isn't there something going to do to maybe give them a higher tax, these new people moving in and these new builders?
When more people come into the system, you have more people that are sharing the cost and we did include some projections for growth in, in our assumptions. So if there are new homeowners or buildings or commercial, whatever, they were considered in the study.
Question I have now that I'm on the right page, basically, you said it's not part of this to look at additional resources. Anybody that uses water, why wouldn't we want to have some type of a fee? The gentleman over there has a good point. If he's on a septic system, he doesn't want to pay the monthly fee, but if I did, I would think that he'd want to say, okay, you take care of my septic system if I'm going to pay a 40 or 50 dollars a month. But why wouldn't someone that wants clean water, that's using the water system, contribute some amount? And why wouldn't they look at that as a source of revenue to be included in this project and say, you're not looking at it now?
So you're saying that someone that's on the septic system, you feel should be paying for a sewer charge?
No, I, I think someone that's not on a septic, I mean, it's on a septic, yeah, exactly. Some amount, 10, 20 dollars a month, but maybe not 41 because they're not using it. If you did that, then I said you would have to maintain their septic system if they're charging it the same as a sewer system.
Again, we, we look at the cost of service of providing the service and that's what we recommended based on it. I'm not saying that you can't look at other things, of course, but, but you have to have something that's defensible if you would get challenged on it and be able to say that this is the cost of providing the service to you. And there are a lot of state statutes about fees being charged that if they're not in compliance with that, then you can get yourself into some hot water. So.
I got a question. How many more developments can you make here with your existing capabilities? Do you know how much more it can grow before you say, okay, we need to add on to our sewer?
Great. That'd be a great question.
Okay. The city currently has a water allocation with the, with the federal government to pull, I think it's 28 and a half million acre feet per year, something like that. Our water allocation will currently support a population of 96,000. Now, I don't know if there's enough available land around here to expand to accommodate 96,000, but that's, that's the population. Our current population is around 55,000. We've got wastewater treatment capacity to treat 8.2 million gallons per day and we're currently treating four and a half to five million gallons per day. So we've got, for the foreseeable future, we've got ample wastewater treatment capacity. It, it actually is pretty consistent with our summer visitors as it is with our, our winter visitors.
If I may too, the system was built to be able to, it wouldn't have to be rebuilt till we get to capacity is. So to answer your question, it doesn't matter how many people come in. We know how much water we have. We built the system when it was first built to that. I say we, I wasn't even living here when it was built, but it was built to that level already. So we won't have to rebuild another system. And as far as the question that this gentleman had about people on septic or people on sewer, that's a whole different question, as I said in the very beginning here. This is about the, the rates for the people that are on the sewer system now. And that's what we'll be talking about and that's what we're going forward here and that's why we're here. Somebody asked, what was the preferred? There is no preferred. That's why we're here, listening to what you have to say. They did a rate study. They told us what are our best options. Now we're bringing it to you. The seven of us, the council members, aren't going to sit up there and say, okay, this is what you, the people, have to do. What we're going forward with is saying, look, we have a system. We, it's a zero-sum system. It's a break-even system. It's not a for-profit system. We own it as a city. We want to break absolutely even. This is what it costs to run the system. What mechanism would you all like us to use to pay for it? Because it's your system, you're the ones that have to pay for it. Which option do you want us to go for? That's what it is. It's, it's not preferred what we want. It's what is it that you want and that's what we will do. And that's why we're here.
How long are these rates going to be proposed to stay in effect or are you going to put a CPI on?
So the rates that we showed you this evening, so these are the proposed rates for starting July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022. As part of the budget process and throughout the years, that's going to be taking control of our models, updating with financial information and making a decision at that point whether future increases are going to be necessary for my, based on how the financials come in from this year. If there is an increase to the rates going forward, we're not proposing to change the rate structure again. It would be this same rate structure. It would just be applying an increase to the, across the board, increase to that rate structure itself.
Could you talk about the senior plan? What that looks like when it comes through, what this whole rate study is just so for our citizens?
Sure. So as part of the process, we looked at a 10-year snapshot of what the financials look like for both water utility and sewer utility, based on the best available information that we have today. So on the sewer side, we are proposing more inflationary level of increases going forward each year for the next 10 years in order to, to keep pace with the increased cost. On the water side, with the decrease of the, of the IDV revenue, so we mentioned this, that was the 5.7 million that I talked about at the beginning and the total deficit being $7 million a year. So we are proposing more aggressive increases over the next several years on the water side. So we, we wanted to make sure that we took a broad enough perspective so that the city didn't end up in financial constraints later on because we didn't do our due diligence and look far enough out. So while we do have recommended increases going forward based on what we're seeing today, it is going to be important for, for the city to update their financial plan annually just to make sure that they are on pace with what the projections are going forward. At this point, we do anticipate that there's going to be revenue meeting increases going forward primarily due to the loss of the IDV property tax on the water side.
Could you repeat the Colorado River Water Allocation for Lake Havasu City?
28,000 acre feet.
And, and it's, it's awesome that we don't, we probably won't have to do winter averaging anymore. I feel like I'm living in a third world country for about three months out of the year, so it'll be super great and I'm glad you're doing this and I just support you. And I would recommend that anybody here just write a letter before or on May 11th to say which option you want.
Thank you. If I may add on to that, I just want to add on to this as one of your elected officials. You all elected those of us on the council to represent you. I want to thank the city staff here, especially Anthony, who's been working on this. Anthony's the, the one with the beard. He's been working on this program. Our city manager, Jess Knutson, who's standing there and he, they're the ones that have been doing all the work. I'm going to forget everybody, but these guys work, work their tails off to make sure that we have the information and to make sure any time you're trying to get ahold of us, that, that the message gets passed on to us. So we really and truly, all of your elected officials, want to hear what it is that you want us to do and how you want us to pay for the system. This is your system. This is your sewer. This is your fresh water. When you turn on that faucet, you want clean water coming out. When you push that handle down, you want all the bad stuff to go away. We don't want to make a penny off of that. We just want to be able to pay for the system and right now, we're not. So because the, and the IDV going away, I'll be with you in just one minute. The IDV going away, that's the money that we're using right now to maintain that system and we won't have that money anymore. So you'll get that back on your taxes. I know for me, I pay $144 a year in taxes for that. I won't be paying that $144 anymore, but I will be paying higher rates. Okay, I use it, I pay for it. So, thank you. And I appreciate all of you coming to talk to us. And I think I had one more question here. For this type of a bond, that's, the question was, can we refinance at a lower rate? With the type of bonds we have, we've got the lowest rate that we're going to get. And that, like I said, that's one of the reasons your rates are so low now and we didn't have to raise rates because we did, we were able to refinance that back in 2015. I say we, I wasn't on the council then either, so, but the city itself. So your staff's working hard for you.
Anything else? And thank you very much. Appreciate your questions. And then this will be the end of our first night with the city council. Thank you.